If you refresh your agenda package, there is an addition. 11.3, which is the last item there under new business purchase and sale agreement. So we'll be adding that to the agenda. I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Counselor Thorburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Puzzles in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Any? Counselor Frazier, you have a...
Yes, I'd like to make two announcements, please. Citizens for Public Transit, welcome all to a public session, info session, on Thursday, August 29th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Bridgewater Fire Hall. If you could please RSVP if you're planning to attend, and I believe the town of Bridgewater has posted this on their Facebook page. They've been busy doing extensive market survey for the public transit and study on the needs for Lundberg County residents. So a final report will be coming forward soon. Also, I'd like to announce that the Bridgewater Barracudas will be hosting the 2019 Summer Swim Provincials here this weekend at our outdoor pool, the Regan Subaru. So it starts at Friday, 1:00 p.m. and runs Saturday and Sunday, so we'll have lots of visitors. Over 500 athletes will be coming to the area, so come on out and cheer on the Bridgewater Barracudas.
Fantastic. Great. Any other announcements from members of the council? Counselor McGinnis?
Only one. Well, no, I thought Counselor Thorburn would bring this up. Tomorrow night, there is a glow walk at the town park. It starts at the Desprez Museum, and I understand that the firemen's band will be there prior to the walk, and so everyone is welcome to come out and walk. I think it's about a kilometer that you walk around the park, and you get to see all the nice glow sticks there, and it's quite a spectacle, I understand. So everyone's welcome.
I did that last year, and it was one of the highlights of the summer for me, because it was not what I expected at all. I thought it was just going to be like glow sticks here and there, but staff lit up the trail with all different kinds of lights, like it was quite something. And we almost had 100 people last year. I don't remember how many. It was a lot.
Yeah, it was quite amazing.
So hoping for more this year. The weather should be good, hopefully. Counselor Thorburn?
Well, mine's international news.
International news?
Yeah. Tomorrow is International Left-Handers Day, so everybody be prepared to greet your fellow left-handers tomorrow.
Well, there's a few of us here. You're left-handed, right?
No, 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 God forbid.
But it's just us, maybe?
Just us.
That's us. Well, listen, at least we get our own day. And congratulations to Counselor Thorburn, who is our pickleball champion. Do you want to tell us about that?
Well, the 55-plus games were held in any condition last week in July, and in the over 70 group, the old folks was lucky enough to have two good partners that bailed me out and we won gold in both divisions. And we're off to the Nationals next year in Campbell, B.C.
Well done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's my segue into my athletic prowess now.
We've seen that.
So I don't want to talk about that, but I do want to say it was great to, a couple of weeks ago, to see activity on the water and to see Dory racing in the town of Bridgewater. We haven't had water activities on the water, activities, in quite some time, so I'm looking forward to that growing and growing and growing. So congratulations to all those who participated, and I'm sure they all want a rematch next year. So it's great. Any other announcements from members of council? No? Any delegations, member of the public here to speak on any matters? No? Palma, how you doing? Welcome back. We have the minutes from July 8th. Regular council meeting before you. Any errors or omissions or anything? Hearing nothing, we'll declare the minutes as approved, and we'll go right down to planning items. You have application to amend the municipal planning strategy in historic downtown commercial C1 zone and the planning analysis reports.
Yeah, so staff received an application on May 29th from Black Seal Properties requesting a policy change for the historic downtown commercial zone. The amendments are regarding the entire C1 zone rather than any specific developments. Any future developments by development agreements would be subject to these amendments, those that are in the C1 zone. So the historic downtown commercial zone is what's shown in pink there. It includes retail, professional, and service-related businesses as well as some residential. Its adjacent zones are downtown residential, institutional, restricted commercial, and park, with high-density residential nearby. The applicant is looking for a policy change to the historic downtown commercial zone to enable flexibility in height and flexibility of the urban design requirements for developments completed through the development agreement process. The proposed policy changes would affect developments completed through the DA process, and Policy C17 of the municipal planning strategy states what developments are considered through this process. So that's new as-of-right development, except for multi-unit exceeding 465 meters square; new multi-unit residential development exceeding 465 meters square with commercial on the ground floor; new multi-unit residential development exceeding three units on all streets except King Street; and new lounge and beverage rooms or additions to existing ones. So regarding height, current policy states that multi-unit residential with commercial on the ground floor located on Arterial and Collector Streets can go up to three stories mid-block or five stories on the corner; and multi-unit residential with no commercial on any street other than King Street can go up to five stories. So on King Street, this is only three stories except the ones located on the corners. The policies that would need to be changed are Policies CDA 6 and CDA 8 in the municipal planning strategy. Proposed amendments would remove height restrictions from the policy, therefore would remove height limitations currently placed on King Street during the development agreement process, and it would bring it up to the same permissions found elsewhere in the C1 zone outside of King Street. So for the urban design requirements, these are things like setbacks, orientation, entryways, facades, and where windows are located. So the land use bylaw states that these must be adhered to by all new development abutting King Street in the C1 zone, but the municipal planning strategy states that they must be adhered to by all development subject to development agreement. So although currently, current policy includes developments throughout the whole C1 zone, the land use bylaw states that the urban design requirements are only applicable to King Street. So with these amendments, that would be cleared up. And the policies that would need changing are CDA 1, 2, 6, and 8. And the proposed amendment would replace the word adherence with strong consideration for the development agreement process, and this would also allow staff to strongly consider urban design requirements for those developments located outside of King Street. So the purpose of the municipal planning strategy as set out by the Municipal Government Act is to provide a statement of policy to guide the development of the municipality. And the MPS sets the policies and visions for land use in Bridgewater, and the land use bylaw sets out the rules for how to achieve this policy. The land use bylaw must be adhered to, and the land use bylaw states that urban design requirements must be adhered to on King Street. However, as mentioned, the MPS is a bit different, and Policy IM6 states that where an application is for a development agreement, the requirements of the land use bylaw are regarded as guidelines. The land use bylaw also contains zoning standards for each individual zones, and that dictates things like building height and setbacks from property lines. And for development agreements, these are used as guidelines in other zones. So with these amendments, they'll be used as a starting point for those in the C1 zone. So out of the 15 objective statements that guide the municipal planning strategy policy, there are 10 that are applicable to this application, and they focus on making sure development is compatible to infrastructure and land use, that development is compact, walkable, and enables a full range of housing, that built form is designed well, and that history is preserved. And Policy IM6 is not required for amendments, but it was examined, because it focuses on development agreements, and those are anticipated in the future as this amendment focuses on development agreements. Some comments from engineering were received that included that any increase of density will require offsetting measures for increases in sewer overflows, and any additions, deletions, or changes to access need approval of the traffic authority. The commercial and residential policies of the municipal planning strategy have been met, and those focus on mixing uses, attractive commercial uses, housing options, and residential densification. And the downtown and waterfront master plan supports a vibrant diverse community through increasing density through redevelopment, and it says buildings on King Street should be a minimum of two or three stories, that the existing rhythm of the facade should be maintained, and that historic preservation should be balanced with new development. Public participation meeting was held on June 25th here in council chambers at 6:00 p.m. 10 members of the public attended. There were also some additional concerns and support received via email. So the main concerns were regarding tall buildings, and staff stated that policy still promotes development at an appropriate scale, and that would still be considered. There were concerns about what new buildings might look like, and we stated that urban design requirements would still be strongly considered, as the wording would state. And there were concerns about additions to historic buildings, oh, sorry, that was part of the design, and parking as well. And we stated that parking is included in the land use bylaw, and that would be considered during the development agreement process rather than this amendment process. So in summary, there's no changes to as-of-right or site plan approval processes or permissions in the C1 zone. The staff would remove height restrictions by development agreement, enable variance from the urban design requirements based on site-specific needs by development agreement, and it would also make the height permissions consistent regardless of where the development is located within the C1 zone. So it's recommended that staff, or sorry, council give first consideration to the amendments to the municipal planning strategy for the historic downtown commercial zone, and that council schedule a public hearing during the regularly scheduled council meeting on September 9th.
Great. Thanks, Mackenzie. Questions from members of council? Counselor Thorburn?
Just one. If we don't have to go back, that first slide wasn't read, but that's the area that's affected. Any building within that area can now go up to likely...
Not any building, so just those that would be under the development agreement process. So those, I'm not sure if you can get to the slide on there, but those are things like new as-of-right developments that are larger than 465 meters squared; new multi-unit residential development exceeding the same size that has commercial on the ground floor; new multi-unit residential development exceeding three units on all streets except for King Street; and then any new lounge or beverage rooms or additions to existing ones.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from members of council? I mean, this does go along with what we're seeing in other centers and what we want, which is more density in our downtown. We want people walking, we want people shopping local, and putting them in your downtown is a great way to solve that. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor Frazier?
I'll make a motion, your worship. That Town Council for the town of Bridgewater give first consideration to the amendments to the municipal planning strategy as contained in Appendix A for the historic downtown commercial C1 zone, and schedule a public hearing during the regularly scheduled council meeting on September 9th, 2019.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor McGinnis. Further discussion?
Question.
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Our next planning item is application for development agreement for 18 Hurdle Drive.
Yeah, so an application was received by staff from Olympus Properties Management Limited for a development agreement to construct a multi-unit residential development at 18 Hurdle Drive, which is highlighted there in the image in between Aberdeen Road and McNeil Drive. The application is for a three-story, 38-unit development, mostly consisting of two-bedroom units with a few one-bedroom units as well. There would be one additional level of underground parking that would have 43 spaces, and there would be five exterior parking spaces as well. The applicant intends to maintain a buffer of trees between that development and the residences on McNeil Drive. The property is zoned high-density residential, or R6, on the zoning map of the land use bylaw, and is also designated as high-density residential on the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy. The surrounding zoning is a mix of single-unit residential, urban commercial, and high-density residential, with Le Havre commercial nearby. And the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw state that multi-unit residential dwellings containing between 21 and 30 units per acre may be considered by development agreement. So on this property, that equals 38 units. That would be permitted. A traffic impact study will be evaluated to understand the impact of site-generated traffic in the area. And the next step would be to host a public participation meeting. So it's recommended that council refer the matter to staff to undertake a public participation meeting in consideration of the development agreement on August 28th at 6:00 p.m. in Town Hall.
Thank you. Questions from council? Pretty straightforward.
Well, it is.
Yep?
Just one question.
Sure.
With respect to Hurdle Drive and coming back, Odon, to Aberdeen, you cannot turn left. I presume that will remain?
So the applicant wants that to be analyzed, to see if it would be safe and possible to remove that, but that would be done in the traffic impact study.
Good question. Further questions from members of council? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move that town council for the town of Bridgewater refer the development agreement application for 18 Hurdle Drive to the Community Development Department to undertake a public participation meeting in consideration of the application on August 28, 2019, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Frazier. Further discussion? Any questions? Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Our next item is correspondence for information. More letters from people regarding ATV's on the Centennial Trail. So we've received these the last few council meetings, residents, so appreciate when people write in or email us and let us know what their opinions are on either side of any issue. So those are received for our information. And I'll just remind the public where we left that off, was we had questions for the ATV Association, that we have not received any information from them, so we're just waiting. Correspondence for action. The West Nova Regiment requests for letter of support naming Highway 10 the West Nova Scotia Regiment Way. Any discussion on this? It's pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward. Would you like to have a motion, your worship?
I would. There's no...
I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater support the efforts of the West Nova Scotia Regiment in their endeavor to have provincial highway number 10 named West Nova Scotia Way, which links the community of Bridgewater and Middleton in honor of the strong bond between the regiment and Nova Scotia by providing a letter of support prepared under the signature of the mayor on behalf of council.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Thorburn. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. Town reports and recommendations. Tender 19-05E North Parkade repairs. Mr. Feener, so we have some changes to the plan in this.
That's correct. The town received three tenders on August 1st. The approved budget is $365,000, which includes $260,000 for structural repairs, $25,000 for electrical upgrades, and $80,000 for the wooden rail replacement. All three tenders exceeded the structural repair component of the budget. Staff are recommending awarding the tender to the lowest submission, being Duron Atlantic Limited, for a total price of $308,279.84 net HST, using the full $365,000 budget, and defer the electrical and rail upgrades to a future budget year.
Questions? Counselor McGinnis?
Would it be more cost-effective to have that railing and electrical done at the time that you're doing the repairs?
It would be different contractors, but it would be important to do the electrical and the rail at the same time. The plan would be to incorporate the electrical within the rail, so it would be important to do those.
Just not incorporating the main structure of the parkade?
Correct.
That's a good question, though. Counselor Thorburn?
We're approving $308,279.84, and you want access to the full $365,000. Why?
There are engineering fees associated with construction on top of the tender value, so that would be in addition to the $308,000.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Tanner?
So Larry, do you feel the $80,000 for the rail and $25,000 for electrical, less whatever work you intend to do as part of this, do you still feel that's a valid number? If we were going to say, let's find space for the, all the components, are those still reasonable numbers? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
The electrical budget could vary depending on what requirements we would like to see on the parkade. When the ESTA was done, we were anticipating no more than a 200-amp service. If for some reason there's large events and we want more power, then, you know, if we're going to a 400-amp service, I suspect the, you know, the budget would increase. The wood rail budget was based on the cedar wood look at Pitch Park. So if there's something else that, you know, that council would like to see, then the budget would potentially change.
Further questions from members of council? Someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor Thorburn?
I would move that Town Council of the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Engineering Department and award tender number 19-05 North Parkade repairs to the lower spitter, Durin Atlantic Limited, for a total price of $339,951.50, including full HST, $308,279.84, including net HST, and defer the wood rail replacement and electrical upgrades to a future budget year, allowing to the full $365,000 approved budget for the structural repairs and engineering services.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor McDonald. Counselor McGinnis, you have a question?
And just one more question of the engineer. This will extend the life of the parkade for how long?
It would be, based on the consultant, at least 10 years for the deck.
Will there be any additional major repairs during that time?
That's correct.
I presume we don't get a written warranty on that.
That's correct.
Shocker.
Shocker.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion's carried. Just getting a reminder to, remember to speak in your microphones. We have a new camera as well, so we're testing that out with the audio visual, so please remember when you're speaking, speak in your microphones. Our next item is Smart City Challenge update for August 2019. I don't know if we have a staff person bringing us any updates on that. The information is in our package.
I'm able to speak to it if anybody has any questions, but this is just a, an update about where things are at with the Smart Cities Challenge. We continue to negotiate the contribution agreement with Infrastructure Canada. So we're the first of the four communities to, we're the furthest ahead in that negotiation process, so we're closing in. They'd like to have a draft contribution agreement by the end of this month, so we'll be bringing that to you in September. In the meantime, they have provided a, I guess, a comfort letter, for lack of a better term, that the money is coming, because we do have a request in this update to add money into the budget. When we planned on this, when we thought through the general federal government timelines, we didn't anticipate receiving any funding this year. We thought that things wouldn't really get started until next fiscal year, and so we, during last year's budget process, we planned that accordingly. So there's nothing specific to smart cities in this year's capital or operating budget. So we are requesting that we add into the budget $100,000, knowing that we will be receiving our money in the next couple of months from the federal government. That's really that, as well as what we learned when we first started the discussions with Infrastructure Canada, is that as part of the, as part of the agreement and as part of the expectation of being especially one of the first cohorts of smart cities communities in Canada, they expect all communities, all of the winning communities, to participate in national and international events, at least one per year, that sort of meets their requirements of showcasing the work that's happening in our community, in our Smart Cities Challenge, and showcasing that globally and nationally. And so the town has already been invited to present its work at a, we continue every couple of weeks to get more and more invitations to speak here and to share here, or call in there. Lots of people want to know what we're doing. So among those is the 2019 C40 World Mayor's Summit in Copenhagen at the end of October, and the mayor has expressed interest in attending that event. We have confirmed that that event would be our eligible event according to Infrastructure Canada, and so we would, the hundred thou, the money that we have for smart cities would cover the cost of travel to and from those events. So that will, we'll be bringing forward a detailed and revised budget along with the contribution agreement with the federal government at a future meeting. So we do make a recommendation, asking for approving an unbudgeted expense of $100,000 towards our energy poverty reduction program in the current fiscal year, to be fully recovered.
Can you get a question? Counselor McGinnis?
It's a ridiculous question, but we're going to ask it anyway.
Okay.
There's an election coming up, as you probably well know federally.
Yes.
And September 8th is the expected date that it will be called, and the feds are not allowed to approve anything after that. I presume everything has been approved for this?
Yes.
Yeah, we did get a letter from the federal government indicating that we have approval, I think, believe they called it "in principle" to proceed with the project, and that our funding agreement would be forthcoming. So it was to give us comfort that we can start planning and working on the project, understanding that we wanted that comfort to do that.
So that leads to another question. Will our funding agreement be signed before September 8th?
Probably not. It won't be by, it may be by their, I'm doubtful, I'll be honest. It's possible if they don't need their minister to sign it, but I believe they do, so it will not be signed by September 8th.
Does the funding agreement need ministerial approval, or does the, like, the pot of money that was set aside? So it's kind of nice in this case to be the $5 million winner, because I'd be shaking my boots if I was the $50 million winner, but I would assume that that money has been set aside in the federal budget, the budget that was passed. So wouldn't it just be somebody signing off on it's Bridgewater that gets the $5 million, not signing off on, we need $5 million? I would hope that the approval for this funding...
I'm just looking at the draft document as I have it right now.
I thought my original question was ridiculous, maybe it wasn't.
No, no.
My understanding was that the money has been approved.
Same here.
So all we're waiting for is them to say it's Bridgewater, Montreal, but not to actually approve the funding.
No, they don't need, so the signatories in the draft contribution agreement, as they are here, are the Assistant Deputy Minister of Infrastructure Canada and Tammy as our CAO, so it does not require ministerial signature.
That's a good question to ask, though.
That is a very good question.
Now we have our answer.
Sorry, I didn't have it.
So the minister can sign it?
But doesn't need to.
Doesn't have to.
But doesn't have to?
Nope.
Because the Assistant Deputy Minister won't change.
Someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor McDonald?
I would move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Community Development Department and approve an unbudgeted expense of $100,000 towards the town's energy poverty reduction program in the current fiscal year to be fully cost-recovered through the Smart Cities Challenge grant.
Seconded by Counselor Frazier. Further discussion?
Question?
Questions being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion's carried. I think, maybe I'll take this opportunity. I hadn't said anything about this conference, but it is a little surreal when you're a town of 8,700 people and you receive an email from the mayor of Paris, who is the chair of the C40, and for those who are watching online wondering what the C40 is, it's the 40 largest cities in the world gathered to deal with climate change. And they very much took notice of energized Bridgewater, remembering that the founding member of the C40 is Toronto, Toronto's former mayor David Miller, received our ICSP years ago. So the original sustainability plan for Bridgewater did sit in the city of Toronto. So the original sustainability plan for Bridgewater did sit in the city of Toronto for them to use, which is kind of cool in itself. But yes, the Bridgewater was very much on their radar and asked to speak at the conference, the World Mayor's Conference, which I think just speaks volume about our team and our, and our product and what we have. And it's pretty cool when you look at the dropdown, you have to fill in your registration, and it's Dubai, Beijing, Shanghai, Bridgewater, New York, Sanos. So, I mean, the whole community should be proud of that, because we're just a town of eighty-seven hundred people making waves in, in quite big waters. So congratulations again to our team for job well done, and council for, this council, previous council for, for keeping things going. Which brings us to our next item, options for new Bridgewater transit bus. It's a very exciting meeting today.
Yeah, just wanted to include some pictures. So the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget included one new bus, fully equipped for accessibility and bicycles. The town did receive funding from Communities Culture and Heritage to assist in purchasing a new bus, and in total, there is six hundred thousand dollars budgeted for the bus. So we currently have end-of-life buses that were donated, that do have high maintenance requirements that have been increasing. They are the cab and chassis style, so the, the truck front, and they have a wheelchair lift. They have, sorry, there have only been a few service disruptions, but in order to maintain a reliable service, a new bus is required. So there are four bus types available, one like the current bus, a conventional low-floor kneeling bus, a cabin chassis with a ramp, both heavy-duty and lighter-duty versions. And although we could purchase another cabin chassis with lift, the other options are more accessible, so there's no stairs, and there's a wheelchair ramp instead of lift, and that can be easier and less time-consuming for the drivers. The last three options listed there, we can get them in approximately the same length, capacity, and accessibility, and the accessibility front may potentially increase ridership due to improvements. So the, those three last options have, oh, sorry, I said that. The conventional bus, the low-floor kneeling, a few things about that is that there is no local service providers and a long delivery time for parts. It is diesel, but it's less fuel-efficient. Some additional training for drivers would be needed. Also has a fairly noisy engine, and driving in snow may be a new experience for drivers with this type of bus. For the cabin chassis with ramp that's heavier duty, there is local sales and service. It is with, runs diesel, and it's more fuel-efficient than the conventional. There's no additional training required, and the heavier vehicle is better in snow versus the lighter duty of the same type. And the lighter duty one does also have local sales and service, and it runs on gas instead of diesel, but as mentioned, it's more challenging to drive in snow than, than the heavier ones. So these prices are for new buses, and it would be approximately half the price for a used bus for each of these, although the required style may not always be available used. So it varies, the conventional low-floor kneeling would be between four hundred and seventy-five thousand to six hundred thousand, and the lifespan is eight to ten years. The heavy-duty cabin chassis with the ramp is two hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred and ten, and that would be about five to seven years lifespan. The lighter-duty cabin chassis with ramp would be a hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand, and would be about three to five years. And then there's the cabin chassis with lift, which is what we have now, that would range between a hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred and ten, and would last between three to seven years. So we have two buses now, and we would keep with that, because it's always important to have it for service reliability. The budget does accommodate purchasing two buses instead of one, and a bus does come with additional costs, including, but not limited to, maintenance, insurance, warranty, and registration. And if one bus is purchased now, as is necessary, and another is purchased at a later date, those additional costs and the warranty wouldn't begin until that second one was purchased. And the timeline, the, the new buses would take about six months to one year to receive, and we could get the used ones immediately, but again, it's dependent on availability, and we won't always have an available one in the style that we are looking for. And the funding agreement expires on March thirty-first, twenty twenty, so due to the timeline of purchasing a bus, no matter what type it is, our request would be sent to the province to change that timeline. So it's recommended that council instruct staff to purchase a heavy-duty, low-floor chassis with ramp, as it's most suitable to the needs of Bridgewater Transit, and that council instruct staff which procurement option to pursue, that were included in the report, and that staff recommend procuring one new bus, as well as a provisional item for a used bus, at the same time.
Questions? Councilor Thorburn?
So what bus are you asking for? There's three or four up on the screen. Is it the last one that you want?
The larger gray one. The gray, that one.
That's a hundred and fifty thousand one?
It's the...
Three to five year span?
No, the five to seven year one.
Five to seven year, yeah, two hundred and fifty to three hundred and ten for new, approximately. This is just based off, off the research that we've been conducting.
Okay.
Councilor Fergier?
So according to the layout of the bus, it looks like there's two options. You can go with nineteen passengers with two wheelchairs or twenty-five passengers.
So I should have probably removed the words, that's just an example. They're very flexible, so if, if we were to get a new bus, you can pretty much choose the layout, so we could put the wheelchair ones in different spaces, but that would be approximately, like, how much you could seat versus with wheelchairs.
We don't have to make a decision if we want a nineteen-seater versus...
Right, so that would come, yeah.
It comes with flexibility there, okay, that's just, thank you.
Councilor McDonald?
The decision to purchase two buses so that you have the backup bus, rather than one bus, and keeping what we have as backup for when, when there are repairs needed, why, why would we purchase two?
There, I don't know if Larry, you want to say anything to that? They're both really end-of-life buses, so we can't even necessarily guarantee that one would be a good backup, but that's why we mentioned getting, having procuring, or sorry, procuring a new one now, but then also a used, just to see what that would look like, and perhaps getting a second one sooner than later, but, yeah.
So with this, the, so the time, we know the timeline for the new one. So if you're going out for new and used, and a, and a used one pops up in three weeks, then we have the option to get a used one that meets our, our specs in three weeks or six weeks or three, whenever, as soon as one comes up that meets our criteria.
We'd be tendering for both, so when the tender closes, yeah. You'd have the pricing on the used one, if there's any on the market on the time to bear.
So what happens if there's not a used on the market? We just keep going back out? Like, these things come up sporadically, right? They're not used cars that you can just say, I want a used Honda, and there's a hundred car dealers that'll have one. Right, so...
So the, yeah, the used procurement is a bit different, but I think the, the point of going out for used right now is to see what is available at this point. And then I do think after that, say we purchased a new one and then we were looking for used ones, it would kind of depend where we found them.
Okay. Councilor McGinnis?
So this one does not have a lift?
That's right, yeah. So rather than a lift, it's a ramp that the driver can actually lower from, well, like, outside the bus, but it's a lot easier to just drive on, takes a little bit less time.
See the ramp coming out?
So it's still, it's wheelchair accessible.
I realize that, but if you're in a wheelchair, is that easier to get on?
It is, it is, yeah, and it's easier for strollers and people with walkers as well. So a lot of people struggle right now, because the drivers have to put their stroller on through the back emergency exit, and sometimes people with walkers can't get up the stairs, so it's kind of more accessible for more people.
So if I'm an older disabled person with not a motorized wheelchair, and there's someone who's around town, you're telling me that's easier than a lift?
The driver could assist them, yeah, because the driver will be out of the, yeah, bus.
Councilor McDonald?
Between bus number one and this bus, what is the time difference? Because when we initially were looking at this, one of the make-or-break items for, for transit was schedule. And I know all of this takes time. What is the time difference between the kneeling and this? Do you have an idea?
I don't think there's much, really. I think it's the other issues with the low-floor kneeling that set that one apart.
Okay.
Rather than the timeline, yeah.
Other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Thorburn?
I would move that town council of the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the community development department and direct staff to purchase a new heavy-duty bus with a low-floor chassis equipped with a ramp to best suit the needs of Bridgewater Transit, plus a provisional item of a procuring a used bus.
Seconded by Councilor Fergier, further discussion? Councilor McGinnis?
Yeah, I want, I want, just bear with me here. We have bus stops all around town. Do we clear those?
We do, depending on priority, and if they're not clear, the driver would use the next available driveway or whatever that is clear closest to the stop.
Did I answer your question?
It answered the question, not sure if I liked it, but it answered the question.
But at some point in time, all the stops will be clean when they...
Yeah, they are.
That's correct. I mean, we, we have to clear the streets first so that vehicles can get around other things, such as fire protection, hydrants, and things like that, you know, depending on the, the priority and availability and working hours, you know, the severity of the storm. We, I, I don't think there's been a lot of issues with regards to unclear stops, but we haven't had a lot of storms in the last, a little bit either.
But neither of those buses would help with an area that wasn't cleaned out. Like, one's a lift, one's a kneel, one's a ramp, like, there's, there's no solution for a bank until you shovel it, right? Okay. Question? Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Proposed on-call-pay policy, Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual, section five point seven.
So this is to give notice that at the September council meeting, council will consider changes to the on-call policy for the town of Bridgewater, non-unionized employees, and what it would do is make the on-call compensation at par with the unionized. So right now, non-unionized are approximately a hundred and fifty dollars per week for being on-call, and the unionized are two hundred and fifty. So this would bring them to the two hundred and fifty. There are a few positions that, I think, one that is a little higher than, than the one fifty, and that one will go down, or higher than the two fifty, sorry, and that, that will go down to two fifty, so that all employees that are doing it on-call, non-union and union, will be compensated the same. So this will be, this is just notice tonight that you'll be considering it at the September council meeting.
Someone prepared to make that motion? Councilor Fergier?
Yes, Your Worship, that town council for the town of Bridgewater approved the proposed on-call policy, policy five point seven, and include the new policy in the town of Bridgewater's Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual.
Yes, Casey, Councilor Fergier, could you refresh your...
I'm sorry.
That motion has been updated.
Okay.
It should automatically refresh, if you just click on the... You got it?
Yeah. That town council for the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to section forty-eight of the Municipal Government Act. At the September ninth, two thousand and nineteen council meeting, the proposed on-call policy, personnel policies, Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual, section five point seven, will be considered.
Thank you, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, thank you. Next item is new permit parking space at town hall, a request to increase the budget. I can't, Councilor McGinnis, when you talk about these things. So these are the additional spaces that we're adding as we get towards Phoenix Street.
Correct.
There's increased work to do to build the retaining walls, is that the...
Correct, the supplier and installers are recommending a different style block. So it's the larger style block versus the smaller ones that we've been typically using around town. They seem to be more susceptible to salt deterioration, and the larger blocks seem to be more giving in a parking lot situation should they get bumped. So they are increased, are recommending the larger block, which means more money than we originally had budgeted. We were budgeting the smaller block, and there's a few other changes, such as signage, and we're looking at changing the entrance somewhat to improve sight distance. So those things weren't taken into consideration in the, I guess, preliminary design or preliminary look when we created the original budget.
So these, the larger blocks are going to last longer?
They aren't susceptible to salt like the other ones are, so less maintenance.
Deputy Mayor Tanner? And to clarify, blocks are concrete blocks?
Yes.
Premiumed concrete blocks are retaining walls? Not rubber bumpers or anything like that? Correct, okay. Just had to know.
Where are you parking?
Had to know.
I want to park there.
So prepared to make, oh, Councilor McGinnis?
Just briefly, we're going to create how many more parking spaces?
I believe it was eight or nine. When we lay it out, so with the line markings, we'll know for certain.
So we're going to pay this, pay fifty thousand dollars for eight or nine parking spots?
Correct.
We are going to cover some of these costs through a permit to new development.
We're, we're looking at a lease arrangement, and if not, there'll be permits, permit spaces regardless, and there is a...
So they'll generate some revenue?
Yeah, it'll take some time to pay back the fifty thousand, but, yeah.
Obviously. Yeah, okay.
Someone prepared to put a motion on the floor?
Oh, I will, Your Worship. I move the town council of the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the town engineer and increase the town hall parking lot nineteen twenty budget amount from thirty-eight thousand to fifty thousand to fund the additional cost needed to create the new parking stalls in the town hall parking lot near Phoenix Street, with the additional funds coming from the operating reserve.
Okay, seconded by, I think, Councilor Thorburn, sorry, Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any discussion?
Westwood.
Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Next item is Hebbville Sewer Connections Agreement. I don't know if someone's speaking to that, or you speak to that?
At our, at our previous discussions session, councillors received a presentation from staff, and that presentation had to do with our sanitary stormwater master plan that was created in June of twenty eighteen, and council wanted to be briefed on the findings of that to understand what capacity issues we have within our wastewater system that we have. And at that time, council was advised that there are various areas within the town where there are some capacity restraints, and we have a plan in place to look at those over the next several years, and we recently got a funding announcement for some major improvements that will help address some of those capacity issues over time. At that, at that time, council asked the question about sewer that may extend outside of the town boundaries, and what protections were in place to ensure that if development was constrained in various areas of the town, and we were looking at matching our planning to those, those constraints, could they go just outside of town where the sewers extended and develop? So there was a review done of the agreements that we have in place to determine whether or not there were protections against that, that type of thing happening where the capacity is compromised further in the town without any controls. You do have agreements with the District of Wunenburg for the Hebbville sewer system. There's one done in nineteen eighty-two, of which imperial gallons per day, there was a limit put on that, as well as the number of units that could be connected. So the number of units were a hundred and forty units, and the imperial gallons per day were twenty-three thousand. In nineteen ninety-nine, that was amended, and at that time, the town and the District of Wunenburg were looking at the discharge from the Public Service Commission's water treatment plant into the Hebbville sanitary system as opposed to discharge sewer wetland area. And there was a hundred and sixty thousand imperial gallons that was allotted for that discharge, and the imperial gallons per day overall was increased to two hundred imperial gallons per day with a fifteen percent tolerance on that. So there is, there is a limit in terms of the flow that can go in there, and the hundred and forty units still remain in place. In terms of do we measure that, we do have a meter that measures the discharge from the water treatment plant. I believe that is on average around sixty thousand imperial gallons per day that come out of that. But we don't have anything that measures right where the connection from Hebbville to our sewer system occurs. So engineering suggests that we look at a master meter to, to do that measurement, and that would be approximately fifty thousand dollars of capital cost, and we would look at that, and next year's budget of council was agreeable to do that. And that would provide us with the knowledge about how much flow is going in and are they exceeding... And that would provide us with the knowledge about how much flow is going in and are they exceeding, are we close to exceeding. In addition to that, we contacted the District of Luenenberg just to remind them that there were these capacity limits and that there is an expectation verbally that there would be that check with the town when there's a, a development occurring to ensure that it didn't exceed the, the limits that were imposed by those agreements. Since the discussion session, when, when this was first presented to council, um, the issue, the topic of Eagle Ridge came up, and, and in particular, the Phase Two and Three, which are, um, in the District of Luenenberg, but, um, intended to be serviced by the town sewer. So in twenty, in twenty fourteen, uh, council entered into a memorandum of understanding with the District of Luenenberg and the developer that essentially stated that Phase Two and Three, as proposed on the plan at that time, and in accordance with the report that council had commissioned that was completed by Harlan Line and CBCL, so it was based on assumptions about, um, capacity and that would, and density that would come from the development as shown on that plan. Council agreed that Phase Two and Three could be serviced by the town system provided all costs associated with servicing that development were covered by the developer. So there's a lot implied in, in that, and, uh, it would be important that, uh, we continue to do that check-in with the District of Luenenberg and the developer to ensure that the density doesn't change. Cause if it does, then it changes the assumptions upon which that motion was made and, and thus the intention. So, um, staff have been asked to just do that check-in with the planning department and, and the District of Luenenberg to ensure that. So what the recommendation tonight is because of the Eagle Ridge piece, it's more monitoring until we know that something's occurring there for Phase Two and Three, and then the negotiations have to happen because it's, it's an MOU, not a, not a formal agreement to service at this point. The recommendation is to write the District of Luenenberg, uh, a formal correspondent, formal correspondence that would be a follow-up to the verbal conversations that were had. That would advise them of the need to ensure capacity thresholds established in the nineteen eighty-two and nineteen ninety-nine agreements are not exceeded, thus to seek the approval of the town for sewer connections along the Hebbville sanitary sewer system so that we can ensure that we understand what the capacity or the flows are gonna be that are coming into our systems so that we can ensure that we can in fact accommodate it. And direct staff to provide for a master meter to measure flows into the town's wastewater system from the Hebbville sewer system in the twenty twenty twenty-one capital budget.
All right. Yeah, that's a lot, but as we've discussed, we, I mean, town is growing, and we have, we have capacity, uh, stress points, and we certainly can't have development, um, curtailed in the town due to development outside of town that's using our system, and we need an accurate way to measure. So, hence the, um, both seeking their, uh, contact with our staff whenever they develop the, the master meter. Councilor Thorburn?
Yeah, on, on that motion, uh, my two, Worship, I wonder if the word flow should be master flow meter?
Yeah. Can we refresh the...
Maybe it's been refreshed before.
Okay, we need to refresh it again because there's something, but just let's see, Sandra, second.
That's your flow meter?
Yeah. Any other discussion while that's being updated? Mayor Tanner?
When we talk about a hundred and forty units, um, do apartment, how are apartment buildings counted? Each individual unit within an apartment building is a unit, or is the whole apartment building one unit?
I'd say it was each unit.
Each, okay. Okay, and if you wanna refresh your screens now, that'll change that motion. Councilor Donald?
You said I would say each unit. Do we not have that in writing?
It is in Chinese.
Okay.
Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Thorburn?
I would move that Town Council, uh, the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Chief Administration Officer to, one, send a letter to Municipal District of Luenenberg advising of their need to ensure capacity thresholds established in nineteen eighty-two and nineteen ninety-nine agreements are not exceeded. Thus seeking approval of the town for sewer connections along the Hebbville sanitary sewer system. And, two, direct staff include a master flow meter to measure flows into the town's wastewater system from the Hebbville sewer system in the nineteen twenty twenty-one capital budget.
In the twenty twenty-one, yeah. Seconded by Councilor Frasier. Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
Dawn's not here, so I can't ask her, but do we have an estimate of what sort of revenue we're bringing in from those connections?
Well, there's eighty connections, and we just set the rate.
And then we pay? We have, and we pay them?
And we do, yeah. PSC pays, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we can get them.
I'd just be curious.
I can't remember the rate offhand, but it's eighty connections that we bill for.
We're having to spend a lot of money to protect ourselves.
So we'll, we'll get that answered. A question, any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, next item is RFP twenty nineteen dash zero seven Town Hall siding installation. It's my, my only question before we go down, so is this gonna solve the problems that we have with water coming into the building?
Water's been an issue for many years now, and we've attempted to solve that in many different ways, and sometimes the same way multiple times, but, uh, this is, I guess, the, uh, next recommended solution. We did have another facility, uh, owned by the PSC actually, that had a similar situation, and then this is what we did a couple of years ago to solve that issue. We weren't successful in that facility, hopefully we're gonna be successful in, uh, in this facility as well. We've seen various degrees of success with what we've attempted to devise.
Well, we gotta stay here because we're not building a new one.
That was further down the agenda, no?
Careful, careful.
Do you like a motion?
Yeah, I would. For, for building a new, uh, town?
No, no, okay. Uh, I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Engineering Department and award RFP twenty nineteen dash zero seven Town Hall Tower Siding Installation to Parsons ICF Construction for the installation of steel siding on the Town Hall Tower as proposed in their RFP submission dated July eighteenth, twenty nineteen. For prices sixty-two thousand dollars, including HST, it's a six thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars and seventy-six cents net HST.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor McDonald. Do you realize the front page of the paper next week is Deputy Mayor recommends the building?
More importantly, we need to email Dawn and tell her that we just approved that motion.
Uh, any further discussion on that, on just the siding?
Yes, just the siding.
Councilor Thorburn?
What was in the budget to do that siding? Do you remember the dollar amount?
Fifty, uh, fifty thousand dollars.
So it's all...
Everything's over by, over by six.
Yes, but it doesn't say that.
Ready for the questions?
Okay.
On this question, make one. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Uh, next item is Bridgewater Business slash Industrial Park, um, infrastructure budget. So lots happening in the town.
This is really just housekeeping. Um, we need to establish formally a budget for this item, and you've already approved your contribution of ninety thousand. Twenty thousand is budgeted, and the seventy thousand in shortfall would be coming from operating reserve. So the recommendation from Dawn is that you approve nine hundred thousand capital budget with majority of funding coming from ACOA, the province, and then the town's contribution of money, which is from reserves as well as capital from operations.
Just, you just want to formalize it?
That's right.
Yeah.
Yes, Your Worship, why don't I make that motion now? I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater approve a capital budget of nine hundred thousand dollars for the Bridgewater Business Industrial Park Infrastructure with funding provided as follows. ACOA, five hundred thousand dollars. Province of Nova Scotia, three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Town of Bridgewater reserves, seventy thousand dollars. And Town of Bridgewater from operating, twenty thousand dollars, for a total of nine hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. It's a nice funding arrangement. Any further discussion? Question, question being followed.
Just one question. When's it, we're gonna start?
It's on the agenda tonight.
It's, uh, like, two more items down, three more items down.
Wonderful question.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. You couldn't have put those together, eh? Just to change it up. Uh, next item is appointment of building official, uh, Kirk Wenzel? I guess we should congratulate Kirk for, uh, being a new building official. So we do need, we do need a motion to formally recognize that, so we're gonna make that motion. Councilor Thorburn?
I would move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of Inspection and Facilities Manager and appoint Kirk Wenzel to Building Official according to the Building Code Act.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Frasier. Any discussion? Did you have anything you wanted to add to that, Mr. Peter?
Uh, no, this just gives us flexibility for scheduling succession plans.
Perfect. We're busy, we need to...
He will also maintain his existing duties?
That's correct.
Councilor?
I'd just like to make sure we thank Kirk, because I think he was two years taking enough courses to qualify, so it's been a work in progress for quite a while. He's quite an accountant, I think he should be noted as that.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Next item is, uh, RFP twenty nineteen dash zero eight Supply of One RBC Shaft Mount Reducer at Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is the exciting stuff. This is why all the kids wanna be on council. I mean, this is straightforward. We're doing work at the wastewater treatment plant. It's an old plant, needs work as we go along. Um, anything else to add?
It's within budget.
That's one of the few things tonight.
One of five night beer, I guess, huh? We got two, we got another one.
Looking for a motion, Worship? I move the Town Council of the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Engineering Department and award RFP two thousand nineteen dash zero eight Supply of One RBC Shaft Mount Reducer at the wastewater treatment plant to the low bidder, send some equipment for an estimate cost of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and nine cents net HST.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Frasier. Further discussion?
No one asked him what that is.
I, yeah. I mean, it's, it's in the description, I'm sure it's...
I'm sure it's important.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. All right. Now we know why Deputy Chief McPhee is here. Um, tender twenty nineteen dash zero six P Purchase of Police Vehicle. Um, and you're gonna have to walk us through this one because...
Yeah, I'm not there.
Um, this is gonna be a tough one.
Okay.
This is not the lowest tender.
No.
Um, and so you're going to really need to sell council on why we are not going with one of the lower tenders, or I'm gonna recommend that we defer this to another meeting. And go. Excellent. Can you just move the microphone over, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So, uh, we put this to tender after setting initial budget with the provincial pricing of thirty-four thousand dollars. Uh, that was including the vehicle and then kit, uh, equipment and deckling. Uh, after that, we found out that we had to go through the RFP process, which we did. Uh, we had, uh, four local dealerships request packages, received nine tenders. Um, there was four that we discounted right away because they were over thirty thousand dollars. We wouldn't have been able to outfit or kit the vehicles at that amount, um, on top of the price that they already had. Uh, we did review and view the, uh, the other four vehicles. So the lowest was a Chevy Trax. Uh, I don't know if you've seen them, but, uh, we've actually went out, uh, Constable Shipley, who is our SSRR officer. They're very small, they're really compact. Um, we use our vehicle currently, that two thousand eight caravan that we have for our school resource job, um, to transport kids and cops this week. We transport through that. Um, we do a lot of training through that, so any of our firearms researches. Uh, we did rapid deployment training in the valley last year, so we're training consistently that we're using that vehicle, um, to travel back and forth. We wouldn't have been able to fit any members in it, so that didn't fit our operational needs. Uh, another, let me go through my list. The Jeep Renegade, uh, we did rank that, um, and we did rank the Chevy Equinox and the Jeep Compass. The Jeep Renegade, um, was not available for sixteen weeks. Because it was, uh, manufactured in Italy, they had none available. Um, our vehicle, like I said, it's a two thousand eight Dodge Caravan. There is absolutely, uh, we're having a hard time keeping it on the road now with the bodywork and the maintenance that's required. Um, and it, it's pretty realistically embarrassing, the bumper's falling off, and we don't wanna do any more work to it. So we can't wait sixteen weeks. So we're between the, uh, the Chevy Equinox and the Compass. Uh, the Equinox was the, um, was a lower price than the Jeep Compass, uh, but it did not include a trailer package. Said one was available, but it wasn't included in the, uh, in the tender. Um, so I don't know what the price would have been if that was added on top of it. Uh, we also use that van to transport our speed trailer, uh, which we take around to multiple areas. It's our only place that we, uh, it's our only vehicle that has a trailer package on it, so we do wanna replace that. So again, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the cost would have been, but it would have brought it a little closer. Um, and then on top of it, uh, the Compass was our recommendation. Uh, it is a twenty twenty model, so it is an extra year, uh, newer than the twenty nineteen Equinox. Uh, the towing package was entered as well, and, um, we received, uh, some direction and, and agreed with commission, um, that we wanted, uh, to replace the SSRR van. It was something that newer drivers, uh, community partners would find, you know, not your typical police vehicle. We didn't wanna have, um, you know, uh, the typical Ford Escort, um, Chevy Impala, like that, the things that you always see as police vehicles. So this is a little different. It's still within budget. Um, it's kinda points to our rebranding, which is what we really wanted to do, is we didn't wanna have, you know, our typical look, so, um, and then on top of it, there's already, uh, Equinox, uh, that the RCP are using locally. So to kinda get outside the box, to have something that there'd be a little bit more interest in whenever we're doing any community engagement, any partnerships at the school, any ride-alongs. I think it, it would, uh, it would fit what we need, um, in the community. And again, it's, it's still within the budget. I know it's a little bit more expensive, but I, to get fits what we need.
Questions, members of council?
Deputy, Deputy Chief, did I hear you correctly that you went out to Nova Scotia procurement, but then had to go to tender?
Yes.
Why?
Uh, that was at direction from senior management.
Okay.
So we originally used to go to, um, to the provincial pricing.
Okay.
Uh, and we broke away from that, uh, mid-spring after we already budgeted this in the capital budget.
Yeah, okay. Other questions? Uh, Councilor McGinnis?
I'm assuming that warranty is not included in that price? The warranty on the, uh, Compass is thirty-eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. Is that included in the twenty-nine thousand? It's an extended warranty.
No, that, yeah, that wouldn't be included.
So it's twenty-nine thousand plus?
And we typically don't get the extended warranty with any vehicles.
Just get the manufacturer's.
Just the manufacturer's warranty, yes, yeah.
So, that three thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollar figure is not accurate? Cause that includes an extended warranty?
Uh, I believe, you... That was our tax portion.
Your net HST.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the, the delivery time on the Equinox, though, it says in this chart is one week. So if, if delivery time is one of the factors...
Yes. And we were told, sorry, uh, to correct, um, from Jeep, originally, we were given that ten-week notice that it would take ten weeks to get every vehicle. That was just their standard line to us. When we spoke to them after we were seeing the vehicles, it went to, like it said, one went to sixteen weeks, and others dropped down to two weeks, some to ten days. So this was, uh, again, the Compass would be there, and it would meet the same as the, uh, the Equinox. So it wouldn't be a ten-week notice, or ten-week delivery.
And we don't know what the towing package cost is on the Equinox to, to make it kinda apples to apples?
No, no, we don't.
And it's a year newer?
And it's a year newer, yeah. Further questions? Councilor McDonald?
This vehicle has all of the decals, but it doesn't have a light kit or anything like that, right?
No, and that's why we discounted everyone that was over thirty thousand dollars, because, yeah, we have to decal it, we are gonna put a light bar on it.
There you are.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna put a radar in it. It's not gonna have the silent partner, like, to put prisoners in, like, we wouldn't... It's not going to have the silent partner like to put prisoners in like we would in our regular patrol vehicles, but it would be, it would look like a police vehicle, yeah.
Yep.
Just for, for, just to say it aloud. Um, one of my concerns with the current vehicle, the, the minivan, was that it really blends in, 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 um, in the school zone where, where it often sits in the mornings. Um, this vehicle, it'll stand out a little bit more because its presence has a big factor, factor in, in how people behave in, in a particular area. Um, this may stand out a little bit more. Is there anything you can do with the decals to make this vehicle stand out more? Because it's not that different. My kids call SUV's mom cars now.
Yeah, no, exactly. Um, so I, we are re, uh, rebranding all our new vehicles. We're doing a different color scheme, we're doing a different, uh, you know, layout of where the decals are, where everything is laid out. So I, I think it would stand out a lot more than the van. Um, I, I know all our vehicles will stand out a lot more than they used to.
Okay.
Further questions? What's council's wish? Oh, Councilor Donald, yeah?
Um, there's nothing on here about any legal implications of not going with the lowest bidder. Where do we stand on that?
The, um, the tender evaluation criteria was more than just price, right? So it's not, it's not your typical tender where you have specs and they meet the specs, and then it's, the price is really the only thing that you're comparing because they've met everything. There are some criteria that, um, are based on delivery time, warranty plan, which we're not buying, um, fuel economy, and then added value. So there's, there's, there's points for those particular items that would be outside of price, so. You're not stuck to the lowest price if you're higher in those point areas?
You got a couple of options. Someone could put a motion on the floor. You can, we can push this to the next meeting and take more time. It's up to you.
I'll put the motion on the floor.
Sure?
I would move that town council, town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the police chief and award tender nineteen dash zero six P, supply of one two thousand and nineteen newer black SUV or crossover and purchase a two thousand and twenty Jeep Compass four-by-four from Sonder Motors at a price of three thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents, which includes our portion of the HST.
Second, your please. Councilor Frasier, further discussion? Unless you want to talk more.
No, I think, I have a better understand, I certainly have a much better understanding of, of the requirements now. I, I think maybe? Yeah, when we're, when we're not picking the obvious one, because there, there is obviously the score, it would be nice to have a bit of a more detailed, um, synopsis for council to make that decision. Um, because again, after hearing the, the deputy chief speak, it made more sense, I understood it. So maybe to, if it's, like I said, if it's not the most obvious choice on paper, we should probably have that in our hands ahead of time. So that's all I want to say. You ready for the question?
Questions? We call all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried.
I think you did a better job than Scott, just.
Well, I didn't know we could do PowerPoints, so I was impressed with you.
Yeah, like no pictures.
I should have had the old van and the new one.
Oh.
Yeah.
We're really technical here.
Scott would have brought the, uh, the chief would have brought that old yellow police car from Toronto that has a face on it.
Yeah, exactly.
And if you, anyone grew up in Toronto, you would know exactly what I mean. You can Google that. Police car with, yellow police car with a face. It's something. All right. Uh, Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program, the July twenty nineteen report is there. Um, something I, I recommend that, uh, people watching look up. It's, uh, continues to be, um, eye-opening to see how many people are served in this county by the senior safety coordinator, and I do not know what we would do without this program. We would have a lot of people in a lot of trouble without this, and the service is invaluable, so. That is there. Um, if you have any questions, uh, you can talk to Chris Akel. Uh, next item is RFP twenty sixteen dash zero six, twenty sixteen? Bridgewater Business Park Infrastructure Study. So now that we've, uh, approved the, uh, allocation of the funding, now you have to do, now the work has to begin. So this is, um, we've had this discussion before in the work. The, uh, we talked about this at the announcement, the funding announcement that we had, the interest in our community. Um, again, everything kind of, the smart cities has taken on this whole new, uh, role for us beyond just the energy poverty strategy, but there is going to be a employment piece to it, there's going to be an attraction for new residents, and so there is work to do in the business park. I don't know if there's anything more to add to that? No, someone's prepared to make a motion?
I worship if you want.
Yes, please.
Uh, I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the engineering department and award RFP two thousand nineteen dash zero six Engineering Services Bridgewater Business Park Infrastructure Study to Englob Corp to carry out part A engineering study and part B engineering services, design and construction management for recommended infrastructure improvements in the Bridgewater Business Park for an estimated value of six hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars, including HST, six, six, six hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and ten dollars net HST.
Thank you. Councilor Thorburn, seconds.
Just one question.
Yes.
Do we make three hundred thousand dollars here?
No. No.
We're going to spend some more, aren't we?
Yes, there's other work.
Yeah. Yeah, so the other work would be like, uh, in, once we get through this.
Yeah, there's project management on top of that, that we, we got funding for as well as some other stuff, yeah.
Reversed to ask? No. That's good. Any further questions? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, next item, business arising unfinished business, second and final reading of the repeal of bylaw twenty-five anti-noise bylaw. And so I will, I will say again that, um, this does not mean there's no noise protection in the town. Uh, we will be working towards a better enforceable noise bylaw in the future. The one that was here, um, that was not actually, wasn't actually enacted because it wasn't formally, um, advertised and published, so it wasn't even in effect. Um, but it would have been not as effective as what we could have. So we are repealing this, doesn't mean that people can go crazy and start blasting their stereos at all hours of the night and ripping up and down the streets. There are other protections in place, and town council will be entertaining a new noise bylaw in the future. So I just want to make that clear because I know we've had some concerns from people. Um, so we just have to make sure what we do, we can enforce. So, someone prepared to, uh, make a motion? Yes, for sure.
So what's the next steps as far as timeline to engage like a public stakeholder?
Um, we will be.
Or have staff?
Yeah. We'll have to come back to council with some options for council in terms of how the bylaw is developed. If we want to create a committee, council wants to have some draft options and then consult on those. Um, but we're looking at the fall to, we'll be looking at that.
We should be looking at other communities that have effective anti-noise bylaws. Right? Where we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We shouldn't.
No.
Um, so I would assume that especially through our, our policing partners around the province, they would be able to tell us what's working and what's not working.
Share those best practices.
For sure, yeah, yeah.
Just to be showing the meantime, the Protection of Private Properties Act, I think I got that right. It, it covers a pretty broad field and would allow coverage of, of noise.
Yeah, no, the Protection of Property Act, uh, and criminal code actually allows for causing a disturbance. So if you're fighting or swearing, it's actually a criminal offense if you're disturbing an occupier or a resident. And then the Protection of Property Act, the provincial act, that would be able to do a lot of the same things.
Okay.
Yeah. Someone prepared to make a motion?
Sorry, we did that. Um, I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the second reading for repeal of the anti-noise bylaw, chapter twenty-five, as per document nineteen dash zero six eight A. Authorize repeal and authorize staff to publish all public notices pursuant to section one sixty-eight of the municipal government act.
Thank you, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Any further discussion? Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Um, next item under new business is the Lunenburg County Joint Accessibility Committee. Um, so we have amendments to the Joint Accessibility Committee Terms of Reference, and then appointments to the Joint Accessibility Committee. Um, so if someone, these are pretty straightforward. We have a accessibility committee of, it's all five municipal units in Lunenburg County. Um, and we're including now, um, we're changing this to have a couple of village commission, um, members at it because they're going to be, they're required to go through this as well, so we might as well all work together. This is great cooperation, five units. So if someone could make the first motion? Councilor Frasier?
Uh, yes, your worship. The town council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendations of the Lunenburg County Joint Accessibility Committee and amended its terms of reference to allow for the participation by Lunenburg County Village Commissions as presented in document eighteen dash one zero zero B.
Thank you, seconded by? Councilor McDonald, any discussion? Question? Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Uh, someone prepared to make the second motion? Councilor Frasier again?
Uh, that town council for the town of Bridgewater endorsed the recommendation of the Lunenburg County Joint Accessibility Committee and appoint the following members with terms as follows. David Outhouse, three-year term. Louise Hopper, three-year term. Patricia George Swicker, two-year term. Ellen Johnson, two-year term. Sue Rushton, one-year term. Linda Ann Marie Mills, one-year term.
Thank you, seconded by? Councilor Thorburn, any further discussion? None, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, next item is application to fly the LBGTQ plus-two pride flag July twenty, or for the week of July twenty, uh, sixteenth to twenty-sixth, sorry, twenty twenty. That motion is before you? Someone prepared to make that motion? Deputy Mayor Tanner?
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater approve the application for flying the pride flag as per policy eighty-one, flag flying on the designated special purpose flagpole located at shipyard landing from July sixteenth to twenty-sixth, twenty twenty.
Thank you, seconded by? Councilor McDonald. Uh, any discussion? Boy, they are organized.
It's, it's great that they're thinking ahead, absolutely.
I think they did this last year, too. I remember it was right after, uh, Pride Week. They came and asked for the flag. Um, we've had a mover and a seconder. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. We're down to our last item, which is the added item, which is the purchase and sale agreement, um, for a parcel of land. If someone is prepared to make that motion, please. Councilor Thorburn?
I would move that town council within the town of Bridgewater authorize the CAO to execute the purchase and sale agreement as directed during an in-camera council session on August the twelfth, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you, seconded by Deputy Mayor Tanner. Further discussion? Question? Question being called, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. We've reached the end of our meeting. Thank you, everyone. Um, that is our only council meeting for, uh, August, so we return in September, uh, unless something comes up, and then there could be a meeting at the call of the chair. Otherwise, have a great rest of your summer. Best of luck to the Bridgewater Barracudas, who hopefully will win yet another championship. Um, motion to adjourn. She'll move. Moved, seconded by Councilor McGinnis. We are adjourned, thank you.